Well, I'm going to call to order the April 26, 2017, public hearing to consider adoption of revised findings that affirm the designation of urban rural reserves in the metro region in response to remand by Oregon Court of Appeals and Oregon Land Conservation Development Commission. Before we begin, I invite you to join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll all be here in about three minutes. Sonia went to a meeting in Portland, and thanks to employment rate being so low, traffic is terrible. Anyway, before we begin, today we will deliberate whether to adopt revised findings as recommended by staff. Assistants in the hearing today is our clerk, Kevin Moss, Assistant County Council, Nate Boderman, and Senior Planner, Martha Fitzy. Also, our administrator, Don Krupp, is sitting in, which he usually doesn't for land use hearings. We'll now hear from our Senior Planner, Martha Fitzy, and Assistant County Council, Nate Boderman.
Thank you, Chair Bernard. Good morning, Commissioners. Nate Boderman, Assistant County Council. As you know, this is a continuation of a public hearing that began on April 12 and was continued through last Wednesday. To date, you've received testimony from 16 individuals, you've received approximately 80 exhibits into the record, and as I've noted previously, many of those same exhibits, the issues raised were raised previously before Metro. And so, the findings before you incorporate many of those substantive concerns that were addressed in those findings. On April 13, Metro formally adopted the findings responding to the remand, and the findings that Metro adopted are identical to the findings that were provided to you at your hearing last week. For clarification, Metro had adopted two sets of findings over the course of the last year. So they had two ordinances, one that was adopted in 2016, and again, one that was adopted on the 13th of April, and both those, in conjunction, respond to the remand. So for clarification, those findings have been consolidated into one document, and I just wanted to be clear that the consolidation was just that, it was a formatting fix, nothing substantive has changed from the prior version of the findings which you had before you at the last hearing, it's just easier to track as one document. I'll note that you also received testimony addressing the proposed intergovernmental agreement between Metro and the cities of West Lynn, Toowallatin, and Lake Oswego. And while the process for responding to the findings is really separate and apart from any process to adopt an intergovernmental agreement, clearly, both processes are influencing each other. So I understand that as part of the negotiations over the terms of the intergovernmental agreement, the cities are requesting that a reference to the IGA be included in the findings and referenced more as evidence that the Stafford area can be sufficiently served in a cost-effective and efficient manner, as is required by state law and the administrative rules. So if you do wish to include this as part of the final findings, I would suggest that you direct staff to do so in any motion that you make this morning, if that's your desire to do. And we'll make sure to have language ready for your consideration at a future business meeting when you adopt the final ordinance, if that's the direction that you want to go. I will note that if you do direct staff to make that change, at the time we bring the final ordinance to you, we'll need to reopen the hearing and allow people to testify so they have a chance to comment on the ordinance and the updated language. That'll be the first time that anybody will have an opportunity to comment on that updated language, so it would be appropriate to open the hearing at that time. As a final note, Multnomah County is scheduled to hold their final hearings, or hold hearings, I guess I should say, on the response to the remand on May 4 and May 11, so those are coming up here shortly. And if any further action is required as a result of Multnomah County's response to the remand, we'll make sure that we have any additional language or any additional materials for you to consider adopting into the final ordinance, again, if that's your direction this morning. So if it's the commission's desire to reaffirm the map designations that were originally adopted, I'll conclude by saying that staff believes that the findings before you sufficiently address the issues that have been raised and other potential issues that could be brought up in any future appeals. So if you move to deny the findings, we'll stop further work on this process. If you move to approve the findings or approve the findings with any modifications, recognize that you're providing staff with general direction to draft an implementing ordinance, and we'll bring that final language before you at a later business meeting. So with that, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So the second motion says, approve the findings with the following changes. Add a reference in the findings to the IGA as evidence that the Stafford area can be served by urban-level public facilities as required by state law and administrative rules. So that's your reference to the IGA?
Correct. Recognizing that you may want to add that as part of the final findings, and it's not before you today, that's general direction and direction that's sufficient to allow us to go ahead and work on additional language to be included in the final findings along those lines.
Okay, Commissioner Savis.
So, question. Thanks for the update on the Multnomah County's aspect of this, and as I understand it, they're proposed, they're not proposing any map changes to the reserves, as I understand it. So getting back to a little bit of the dialogue with regards to the best achieves and the urban reserves inventory, one thing on the very front page of your doc that you circulated last weekend, it's said, bottom of the first paragraph, it cites, these findings also include supplemental findings regarding the supply of urban reserves in the entire region and the region-wide balance findings required under OAR 660-027-040. So, front page, right here. Front page, but, yeah, first paragraph, last sentence. First paragraph, last sentence. So can you enlighten me a little bit on what that balance, region-wide balance requirement is? Because we've made no changes, and it seems that, as I, and I read the whole document again, I read it in the past, a lot of similar material, and I'm really struggling to find much language at all with regards to the employment land side of this as it relates to urban reserves. And I'm kind of disappointed, there's not more, there's not very much in there. There's, if you took it, put it all together, you barely have a, you barely have a paragraph as it speaks to the employment land, you know, aspects of this from all of these 70-some-odd pages.
Yeah, so the supplemental findings that are referenced, I believe, are Section 5 in the document, beginning on page 16. So that was some of the updated language that was added from the time that Metro had adopted their original response to the remand, which again, was in 2016, and that set of findings really was more directed towards the narrow issue on remand, which was traffic specifically, but then also other infrastructure considerations. So that's really what the 2016 findings were directed towards. The 2017 findings, which they just adopted within the last few weeks, that's where some additional justification was added, directed towards those regional standards, so again, amount of land and best achieves. And when you're talking best achieves, remember that this is a very, I mean, these are factors that are to be considered, and the court was very clear that the county had quite a bit of discretion in how they addressed the best achieved standard, because again, you're talking about livable communities, you're talking about infrastructure, you're talking about a number of considerations, and again, that when you're looking at the entire region on balance, again, sort of best achieves, that balance between urban and rural areas. I'll note that the, that there was some updated language, again, on, sorry, I'm kind of scrambling with the findings document, I believe it was in, I'm not sure if it was Section 5, but the court, kind of going back to what the court said, there was some discussion about how meeting the individual factors for areas was sufficient to justify the best achieves, and so to kind of put this in maybe more layman's terms, if you were able to justify urban reserves under the urban reserve factors, if you were able to justify your areas under the rural reserve factors, the court, I'm not going to say went so far to assume that that was a balance, that best achieved that balance, but I think the court factored that very heavily into whether that balance was achieved. So again, I'm not doing a great job of explaining it, but those factors, again, the court looked at those and assigned quite a bit of weight to whether the county and Metro went through to their, showed their work on those individual factors, and if they did, the assumption was that the result in total best achieved the overall balance. And so if you don't see individual findings related to employment lands, specific parcels of employment lands, because we're taking a look at this on a pretty broad level, we're looking at hundreds of thousands of acres at a time, and so it's, you know, your point's well taken that you might not have those individualized findings, but those aren't necessarily required by the rules or by the court.
I guess what I'm really not talking about the individual findings so much as I am the meaning specifically of the word region-wide balance, okay? So I'm really talking about the totality of the three counties as far as the inventory and the best achieves as far as inventory. There's inventory for housing, there's inventory for rural reserves, farmland, there's land we can't build on, but specifically, just trying to get at what that, OAR, Administrative Rule 660-027-040 speaks, 0040 speaks to in regards to balance. Because if, really, this seems to be absent the, well, taken into context, the grand bargain 4078 for Washington County, there's now been a reduction, right? But when it talks about balance, my, as I read the findings in Section 5, in Section 8, specifically revised findings of Section 8, in Roman numeral 8, which is back on page 52, anyone who's following, that the, my concern is that they, the only sightings and mention of, that is, of employment lands really talks about Washington County's inventory. So it seems as though maybe we didn't achieve balance, and we're actually saying there's enough of it there in Washington County. And I guess where I'm kind of wondering, under page 59, on the page 59, under Section A, transportation facilities, it speaks to that, you know, the Stafford was cited because, and our justification is, okay, well, we're going to fix I-205, and so therefore, we've solved that, that's kind of a justification. But if the overall scheme is to say we're to have the employment land in Washington County, then, you know, I-205 is a, proposed to be three in three lanes, three lanes in three lanes, total of six, and 217 is two lanes, for two and two, for a total of four, that the jobs, if the job land is out in, from Clackamas County or from, you know, in Washington County, it seems to me that the transportation facilities to get to the jobs are, the infrastructure's not really planned that way. I mean, it seems, if that's the way it's happening, but I thought that the purpose of balance was to make sure that we didn't exacerbate our transportation situation and that, you know, our 2040 plan, our balance of jobs and so forth in particular counties and regions, to encourage people to work, live, and play in the same area, that that was a goal. So we didn't, it doesn't speak to Clackamas County's employment land aspect, which has been my, has been the crux of my consternation with how we're situated in Clackamas County to cope with that. So I just kind of, my question is that as far as balance, and maybe I'll dig further after this, to try to figure out if that's what they meant, that there would be balance, there would be a balance of jobs, a balance of farmland, a balance of all those things, and not just out somewhere else unbalanced. And that's what we seem to have, is really imbalance.
Yeah, if I might, couple of responses to that. And I think you're sort of alluding to part of the, you know, the difficulty with that is that balance is, you know, proven to be somewhat of a nebulous term and self-defining in many ways, which I think is why the court came back and said that, you know, Metro and the counties have quite a bit of discretion to go ahead and determine what that balance is and how that's achieved. In the Barker's Five case, in the Court of Appeals case, the court found that the original submittal met the best achieved standard, and so in these revised findings, that's probably why we're not spending a whole lot of time responding to it. And most of the conversation is directed towards the reduction, as you pointed out, from the grand bargain, but that reduction overall, again, when we're talking about the amount of acreage is fairly minimal when you're talking in the grand scheme of things. And so I, the thinking, at least as a strategy to respond to the Court of Appeals remand directly, is to acknowledge that it was, that it wasn't necessarily, that particular point wasn't necessarily remanded by the court. We recognize that there's been sort of this intervening reduction in acreage, but even so, that really doesn't throw off the regional balance in any meaningful way, at least that was the analysis.
Good try. This is pretty complicated. On page 20, they're under balance and designation of reserves best achieved, there's a definition there. The objective of this division is to, is a balance and designation of urban rural reserves in its entirety, best achieve livable communities, the viability and vitality of the agriculture and forest industry, and protection of important natural landscape features that define the region. And I could, I would say that it's true, the reserves, the purpose was to protect forest and farmland. Also, if you go down further, I think it's, the legislature complicated the whole issue when they passed HB 4078. HB 4078 basically changed the designation, took out 2,000 acres in Washington County, and the legis, it is assumed that the legislature knew what they were doing, and that that balance, they balanced Washington County, and if Clackamas County hadn't, didn't change, then it achieved balance. And that's basically what they say in this document. The legislature changed the rules, and they did it, you know, based on the facts, and because they did that, they achieved the best achieved in the Washington County area. That's the assumption, that they actually knew what they were doing. Martha?
I just want to go back to the urban and rural reserves process, because one of the things I've observed, and I've already stated on the record, is that the original process of exceptions lands would have more than likely brought us the same outcome. In Clackamas County, however, Washington County is largely flat. I don't know if per acreage that they have more foundation land, but it did change how things were designated in Washington County, is that correct? Could we say that? Well, they have all foundation land. They do not have the same kind of exception conflicted areas that we do. There's conversations in here about topography. I think the topography influences, or did influence, particularly with, you know, with foundation land, where things landed. So under the old system, it was more likely that Stafford would have been included because it's exception land area. The difference in Washington County is that they have no place to go except farmland, and it's probably highly likely, based on the soils analysis, that they would have had areas that were on the lower tour of the farmland, you know, kind of process where they would not have had the infrastructure close by in order to urbanize. So it seems to me the urban rural reserves process seemed to do what it was intended to do in Washington County, but then the legislature got involved. But in our case, frankly, I don't think it changed any particular outcome. And Martha, we talked about that the other day, about how in Washington County it would change. Could you?
Well, and that's fair. Under the old system, it's based on the priorities, and exception lands are the highest priority. And a lot of the land in Washington County would be a lower priority because it is high-value farmland. And so it effectively, and I don't know the number of acres, but it did effectively bring some of that land up to a higher priority. That's correct. The Stafford area, which is conflicted farmland and probably contains a fair amount of lower-value soils, would have been a higher priority to begin with and probably would be the next lot, one of the next logical places that Metro would have had to look.
So frankly, if the intent was to save farmland, that really hasn't actually been the case in Washington County, because they have no place to develop but farmland. It wouldn't matter if it was foundation farmland, it mattered more if it was next to urban factors. That's what my assessment would be, as somebody who's worked in land use. And I'm just pointing it out, I'm just pointing it out, the intricacies and kind of the, I don't know, circular reasoning that seems to be going on in this. I just find it fascinating.
During the urban rural reserve process, I literally drove all of the Washington County areas that were originally put in to their, you know, their rural reserves, urban reserves. You know, you're right, Washington County doesn't have any place to go except the foundation farmland, so the legislature took, preserved 2,000 acres of that by taking it out. And, you know, they also said that Washington County did not really apply the factors. Frankly, I thought what they did is they wanted to put in their urban reserves everything all the way to the coast, and they got some pushback from that, and they brought that in a little bit further, but the legislature said, well, you still have not applied the factors, so we're going to fix it for you. I want to add one other thing on the transportation. It does mention, you know, I-205, that that would be fixed, but it also says that as the communities start to concept plan the area, we do the exact same thing. We look at our transportation plan, and we amend our transportation plan to meet those concepts. And I basically think that's what it says. So those three cities would, when they plan it, they would amend their transportation system plan to meet the needs that are addressed in the concept plan. And I think that's what basically this says. That's how they address the transportation issue.
Well, again, that begs the factors, why are we doing RTPs if they're saying, again, that's another piece in here I just find very interesting, that they're saying, well, the RTP kind of applies, but not really, because, I don't know, it was on one of these pages, I can't find it again, I got it on record, but it just seems to me they're spending a lot of time and resources doing RTP traffic forecasts and mobility policy maps that are just exercises in doing something to do something, because you don't know what it's going to be unless somebody's brought into the urban growth boundary. So, anyway, that's on page 60, so I've just found that interesting. I, to me, it calls into question is why they're even doing RTPs. Just saying.
Yeah, I just want to just say, your response to my earlier thing on the balance is that, while I read your section there that you cited, and it says, whatever the page was, it talks about that it complies with state law, and I'm not disputing that it complies with state law, what I'm saying is that, does it have, is it really meeting, or can we really meet that transportation element of that? And though in 4078, they didn't anticipate when they did that, where we would be today, right? They just did the Washington County piece. So I was just talking about that region-wide balance and trying to extrapolate out what that all meant. You know, when I went to, I just looked it up, and I went to 0040, I also looked up, it references 0050 and 0070 under OAR 660-027, and number two, under the table there cites, where it includes sufficient development capacity to support a healthy economy. And on page, and we talk about that, you know, we talk about that livable, that part as far as trying to have livable communities, and going back to what the definition of best achieves means, that livable communities piece, I guess my question is that, you know, this was adopted in 2009, it's now, you know, eight years later, nine years later, it's 2017. We're not trending in the right direction, so when do we actually think we'll have livable communities? I mean, we need to really turn this around, so I'm not saying this is the only mechanism to do that, but it's citing the 2014 Urban Growth Report as some of the revised, in the revised findings aspect. And that was a contested report, virtually every jurisdiction in the region said, we don't agree with it. And I can't cite all the different reasons why everyone said they didn't agree with it, but I'm struggling with, you know, again, that best achieves, that, you know, we're not, I don't think, I don't see us really set up with the map, and all the employment lands over there, and lack of transportation facilities to get to there, and livable communities, talking about a lot of mixed-use development, and almost every sighting here of livable communities, not about jobs, it's not about the people, it's not about their welfare, it's really about this, they stated in a physical sense that it'll be these, a small, defined little community, many of them, obviously, but not in the context of livability, is there a prosperity element to that? And if so, how, you need the jobs, and that's the part that's lacking. I just don't see the economic opportunities that will create that in a 50-year horizon or a 40-year horizon or a 20-year horizon if we don't have it here in Clackamas County or we don't have adequate amounts. So I don't think that they've really addressed the livable communities aspect as far as individual incomes prosperity versus the poverty trend we are in currently.
You think, you think that was the intention of this?
I think that having the supply of land and that certainty, which is, you know, certainty is something that's cited in here, I think that certainty about where it goes and having livable communities pretty well assumes that one can get back and forth to work, that there'll be, it cites in here, there will be connections, transportation connections, whether it's transit or whatnot. So, I mean, are we saying that we need a, in the planning, if I-205 was a justification to kick it back, then I think providing some substantial transportation facilities to Washington County, because that seems to be where they focus, the employment lands, that we're lacking a serious connection, a train, not a light rail, but a train, to get people back and forth at that volume, if that's going to satisfy the population projections, because with that, you need to have the employment aspect of that, if you're going to have livable communities. How do you get, how do you get your job?
Well, we'll be flying soon. Sonia?
First of all, I want to thank Nate for this document, which really helped me as a new commissioner and having one consolidated place to get all of the information, because we've had bits and pieces from here and there, and it's been somewhat challenging to get the big picture. But this document really put on paper for me the many, many conversations that I've had with many people about what has happened in the past, what the issue is now, and how we're going to be addressing it for the future. And I, first of all, just want to, and I don't know if everybody in the audience has read this document, but I believe it's on our website, is that true?
It's been on the website for several weeks.
Okay, okay. So it's very helpful in the sense that it goes through the background of the process that happened earlier, and what the issue is right now with the remand, which is really just dealing with the issue of transportation. which is really just dealing with the issue of transportation and some other services that are the, what we have to address with specific findings to go back to get approval to designate these as urban and rural reserves. And what I really appreciated about this document is the big picture of, and of dealing with all of the issues about healthy economy and not only just for the Stafford area, but for all of the previous areas that were brought in that were not, the Court of Appeals did not remand, but it really went through all of the areas and how it fit and what the thinking is and what the process is. So it was very helpful for me to see all of the different areas. I did have one question though, that I'm not sure what's, what the actual truth is. And so I just wanted to ask about just some history. And it's the his, the question regarding process. So this document is good in that it outlines what happened and how the community was involved early on and in the designation that this, this board decided to designate. And I think it was 2011 that the, the urban and rural reserves. And my question is, the community, I've heard from folks in the community that were involved in the process prior to this board, it was a time, it was a different composition of members, so I, I can't speak for that board, but they came up with, what I understand is a different recommendation than what the community had recommended to them. So I just wanted to bring that up, find out if that is true, what happened. It's not referenced in this document. What is referenced in this document is that there was an extensive planning process for a couple of years and the Board of County Commissioners reviewed everything that was there and came up with its own recommendation. And I just am curious about process and what happened there.
Well, I can take a stab at this. I was involved in the original process, although not as a senior planner, more as support. But there were a lot of different recommendations from a lot of different groups. Cities had some recommendations, community groups, CPOs had recommendations, the Planning Commission through their series of hearings had a recommendation, and the, the PAC, the Policy Advisory Committee had a recommendation. They didn't all, that wasn't all the same recommendation necessarily. Excuse me. The board had a, held a public hearing, a series of public hearings and heard lots of different recommendations from citizens and from these groups. And ultimately made the decision that the map was to look the way that it is now. As to why they did or did not listen to recommendations of various groups, I, I honestly don't know. There was certainly some negotiation involved and some negotiation with Metro, but it wasn't a single recommendation that was put forward to them.
Okay, that, that's very helpful. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
I do have a question about the process. When it was designated back then, was it, it was a three two vote, was it not?
Oh my gosh, now you're stretching my, my memory.
I don't know that.
I, I can give you a little bit of, so in, in 2011, it was a, in 2011, it was a three zero vote. I was a commissioner, virtually almost identically as long as you and can have been commissioners. Well, actually can at least, because I was, yeah, I was sworn in in January and, but I was pretty green and I was trying to absorb all of this and I had, even then, when I had, when the commission voted for the, to adopt the revised findings back then, I didn't, as much as I read, I didn't absorb it all. What I know now, after five years, I certainly understand this in a much, in a far deeper sense. And so that was the vote, getting back to, it was, it was three, it was three zero. Jim, Jim was absent and someone else was absent. Well, back, back in that day, I just remember, it was, it was only three, it was only three of us that were here.
So for the record, I'm assuming it was Commissioner Peterson, Commissioner Lineiger and Commissioner?
In 2011, it was myself, Commissioner Lehan and Commissioner Lineiger that were up here. That's who was up here.
And, and that vote was three zero?
That vote was three, three zero.
All of the commissioners, so Commissioner Savis, you would understand then, you would know what the reasons were for adoption.
Well, I, you put me in an awkward spot because what had happened, I had in the months prior to that particular day, whether it was April 21st, whatever the day, 23rd, what had happened is I was asking for really this, I was asking for the revised findings and I was under the assumption that it was a stack of paperwork because when staff said, well, you really want it because it's this thick and they, they did this, right? So I, when it came to that day, I was assuming that we would have that, it was not in the board packet. If you go online, you'll see it's not in the board packet.
You're talking what year?
2011.
Yeah, it wasn't like this.
And, you know, I came in that morning and there was this really thin stack of paper with stapled together on my table. I didn't know what it was because I, and I didn't get briefed by the time the meeting happened. And so what we approved that day, I wasn't even really sure what we approved because I didn't see that. I never got, I never got that. So now I know much more. I'll just leave it at that. I know much more about it. And what I did testify though, I'm going to switch gears here, what I did testify at Metro here the last time, when it talks about best achieved, I forgot what page it's on, it cites and it's not a quantitative, it's a qualitative. So if the argument is qualitative, it gets back, I think you're forced to look at those factors that I'm talking about with regard to poverty, whether, whether it's regard to employment, with livable communities, because, because that's the qualitative element, not the quantitative as far as number of acres. So that's the part I struggle with is that we're not trending the right way. So what comfort does any of the resources that entered into this give me that we're going to achieve best achieves by livable communities on a qualitative basis?
First, okay, first I'm going to go to Nate.
Yeah, just, just to clarify a bit on the history too, there were, 2010 was actually when the, the Board of Commissioners voted to approve the, the map in its current configuration. What happened in 2011 was, well, 2010, the decision was sent up to LCDC and because of the Washington County issue, it was remanded. And during that time period, 2011, was when the county adopted updated findings to supplement what had happened, which is what Commissioner Savis is referring to. And so you really need to look back to the, the 2010 decision of the board to address your question most specifically, Commissioner Fisher, because that's when the, the map was really in its current configuration locked in.
That was, that was actually, I wanted to know what the vote was at that point. It was, my understanding was it was a three two vote. I don't know, I don't, it wasn't here. It was in Salem.
Ken?
I'll find it out.
Can I finish my question? So, yeah, and then I'll be done. Just along the lines of process, so I just had a couple other questions and I want to thank Martha for explaining that there were various perspectives at the time. That really helps me in feeling good about this document and the way that it's written because I was a little bit concerned if there was one perspective and the board did not went a different direction, I would have thought that would have been important to include in this document, but given that there are various perspectives, I feel good about the way it's written. And then my next question, on page 68, it talks about the process coming into the future and at the very top of the page, it says, the first step, the first step in any potential addition of a portion of Stafford and the UGB will require one of the cities to propose a concept plan. And my question is, what is the, when does annexation happen? Is that happened before a concept plan or after the concept plan?
Annexation to the UGB or?
And, and, oh no, annexation to a city, for an area of Stafford.
Yeah, so the concept plan needs to happen first and then it, it would be eligible to become part of the UGB.
Okay, so that was, that was my concern about process. I just wanted to make sure that as the, the communities were considering how they wanted to define their futures, that they had something that they were going to be, that was solid, that was planned, that they were deciding if they were going to adopt. That was just a concern of mine because process is so important with any potential changes.
It's actually a little more complicated than that. First, it's got to be concept plan, then Metro has to agree to bring it in the UGB and then the city needs to agree to bring it in the city and the property owner needs to agree to, to bring, go into the city. So it's, it's a little more complicated than that.
But the first step is a plan.
Yeah, first step's a plan. Commissioner Humberston?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the history is always interesting and, but I don't want to belabor that. I'm interested in dealing with where we sit today. That said, I, so much of what goes on in land use planning is a value judgment and people have different values and perceptions of what it means to be a livable community. I dare say that for many of the folks who live in Stafford, a livable community is significantly different than what it is for the folks who live in Selwood. And that the idea of having to drive a few miles to get to work, even in traffic, is acceptable because of the lifestyle that they enjoy when they get home versus someone who might live in a townhouse or an apartment in Selwood and knows that they can walk downstairs and walk to the, the nearest cafe and get a cup of coffee and those kinds of things. So all of that, when it comes to land use planning, is simply balancing value judgments. In this region, our county has a very large portion of its population that is interested in a more ruralized lifestyle. Some of those folks live in Stafford. And what we're really here to do is to address those issues on behalf of Clackamas County. I understand that it would be nice to have an intel on a, on a large piece of land and we had that opportunity, I'm going to say 40 years ago or so when the freeway 205 went in, but instead of, instead of doing it where we could have done it, which is at the Clackamas Mall area, it, it didn't happen there because Clackamas County wasn't ready for it at that time. So will we be able to reduce the, a number of people that live in Clackamas County and commute to work in the other counties? Possibly. But my suspicion is, is that we will never eliminate that commute. So in the long run, what you really have to look at is how do you best preserve the open land that we do have, the farmland that we do have, the quality of life that we enjoy in a semi, at least a semi rural county? And the way you do that is that you prevent sprawl, you increase density in certain areas and you do put in transportation systems, which we will have to work on as, as a, as a region. But that's really how we have to look at it regionally. So it's kind of a big picture way of looking at it from my perspective and I'm frankly ready to, to deal with the world that we are in today and not the world that we were in 20 years ago and go forward and get the best possible results for our communities as we can. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Chairman, may I comment? I do think that past process is important to understand as we move forward with this because these are political processes, not just factor processes. And I like, I'm just trying to understand how much was political and how much was actually based on factors. It's fine. I understand that. But those past decisions influence our decisions today. And I know they do because there have been a number of decisions since I've been back that we've had to revisit on, under other issues, not the least of which was a ballpark out in Happy Valley. Because past decisions influence what happens today and you have to remember that in this job, it's Groundhog Day and things will always loop back. So I am not going to, well, we'll see when we get to the vote. I, I don't, I'm not objecting finally to the designation, but I have some things that need to be stated when the time comes publicly to get on the record, to make sure that individuals who have participated in the past with this essentially don't get rolled.
Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion then.
Okay, can I ask one question? Just saying, sorry. On page 62, it goes through specifically the transportation findings and how we're going to resolve those. I just want to acknowledge that we received a lot of testimony from people that live in the Stafford area. I for one live in Lake Oswego, I travel that area a lot. I know that the traffic is really bad in that area. What we didn't get from community members was, was a specific, specific response to this page, page 62, which really outlines that there are certain things that have to be done before any changes occur in Stafford that are part, that is part of the planning. And some of those things are on the, on the slate to be done, which is 205, which is huge, that would make a huge impact. And it's my understanding, so I just want to clarify that this is true, that the other areas, so there's Interstate 205 highway, it should be highway probably 43, not 23, but it says highway 23 in the paper, most of Borlam Road and Stafford Road, those areas that, that there will be improvements in traffic will be resolved as far as any concept planning or any increase in density.
That's the assumption. You know, again, we're not engaging in a detailed planning process as part of, as part of the reserves. I mean, it's, again, there's, there's talk about, you know, framework plans, concept plans, what have you, but I think the, the real takeaway here is that the assumption is that if this area is to be developed at urban densities, that the infrastructure will follow and is capable of following. And again, we don't have any sort of indication what that would look like today. But again, you know, if we're, if we're talking about the evidence in the record, the evidence in the record, you know, from the, the 2035 RTP to the most current version of the RTP suggests that, that we're moving towards being able to provide that. And, and I guess that, that might not even be an accurate characterization, I guess I should say, that, that the evidence that was pointed to originally, that the courts took exception with, isn't necessarily the compelling evidence that, that we look at. And so again, that's not a satisfactory answer to your question, I understand, but it's really because we're, we're not detailed planning this area yet. And, and as part of, as part of, you know, any agreement with cities through IGA, I know that was, that was a point to be addressed, is that, that the cities would have control over the timing and the design of, of what that would look like. And not until those elements were in place would it be eligible to come in and urbanize.
Yeah, and my only concern is that there was a remand based on what we submitted did not address the transportation needs adequately. The cities, two of our cities were very concerned, they appealed, good questions. This addresses it in the sense that there will be a plan before urbanization occurs and we will make sure, or the planning says, there are some assurances that the issues will be addressed. So I just, I'm bringing this up because of the voluminous, I mean, I've got a stack that's here and there are many, many letters and most of them deal with traffic, traffic that I experience on a weekly basis. And I just want to acknowledge that and say that what's now is now and it could be that if things change, hopefully 205 will change soon, keep my fingers crossed, but we'll see improvements in that area, hopefully in the future.
Council?
Yeah, and I think we need to recognize what, what the findings document is, right? And, and that is a response to legal arguments. So it's chock full of only those arguments that a lawyer could love, right? And, and doesn't provide the satisfactory answers to, you know, the transportation necessarily. It addresses the evidence, but it doesn't necessarily follow how we're actually going to implement that. You know, to Commissioner Savis' point, it doesn't necessarily talk about how these communities will develop, but it talks about how on balance, what we've designated is appropriate under the rules. And so again, I, I guess I'd, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that, you know, again, a lot of these findings are directed towards those, those legal standards. And so what we're asking you to approve is a document that in effect solidifies our justification to the court. So keep in mind, that's the lens that we approached it to when we got our direction as staff at the beginning of the year, that was, that was really our marching orders was to respond to the remand and those necessarily involve legal arguments. Once upon a time, the direction to staff was go out and investigate other areas that, that maybe, you know, are appropriate for urban reserve designations, which again is, is more along the lines, again, of what Commissioner Savis was advocating for. And, you know, that was the direction at the time and staff went down that path and direction changed at the beginning of the year. And so the document in front of you really is sort of staff's response to those legal arguments. And again, I think we need to keep that in mind when, when we're trying to determine what, what it is you're voting on.
Commissioner Savis?
And I, you know, and I appreciate, I appreciate what you said, Nate. And, and I kind of alluded to it earlier, there's the legal, what's legal, what meets legal aspect of this and really what is actually achievable, practical from a qualitative standpoint. So two, you know, and in, in the big picture of things, which we're really responsible for doing, this is really- responsible for doing, this is really a big picture, is a forty, fifty-year, um, uh, package, if you will, what we're talking about as far as reserves of land. So, in the remand, back, back to us, there were two, there were two aspects. It was the Stafford issue and it was best achieves. And I know that the IGA with the cities is, um, you know, one of the things we're looking for to be included, I believe. And I know that, uh, we've been racing in the last few days to try to get, um, that codified and get a mutual agreement. I know that, as I understand it, the cities have yet to meet as councils and the metro council to approve, uh, what may be, this may be the final draft, I'm not sure. So I think that's a per, that's an element that will solve possibly, or address, almost say solve, address that, that Stafford element. So on the other aspect of the remand, which is best achieves, in the big picture, not necessarily for Clackamas County, but for all of us, is that this was all predicated, um, the layout for the process was predicated that the core four, and the core four would be, uh, represented from Clackamas County, Washington County, Multnomah County and Metro, would sit down and make sure and coordinate that we collectively, through these changes, address that. So I presume that best achieves and all different ways it's addressed here would really be that coordination. And I don't know that we have really had a discussion where the core fours come together in the revised piece, say, okay, you know, what have we all done and are we there, at least especially on this best achieves? And that, that's the part that I'm, I'm struggling with. I've mentioned at every hearing we've had in the last few weeks, um, about that best achieves aspect. And that's the part I'm still struggling with. So do you feel, my question to you is, do you feel as though that the best achieves was assigned to a certain county? Or was it really assigned to all of us? All the counties? All the parties?
Um, yeah, I, I don't think it could be assigned to one county. It should be, I mean, it's a regional standard, so I think it's, it's necessary that all involved parties that are affected address that. And, and that's the plan. And we're certainly addressing it through our findings. Multnomah County will be in theirs and Metro, of course, and the findings that we received from them. On remand from the court, we did have obviously the Stafford issue, the infrastructure issue. That was a direct remand from the court. We chose to respond to those regional standards, the best achieves and the amount of land standard, because we thought, um, those were implicated certainly by the grand bargain and what that did. We thought it, it deserved some attention and some discussion in the findings, just to, um, avoid any appealable issues on that. But again, that, that wasn't necessarily directly remanded to us by the court. And again, in our, our response, as Chair Bernard alluded to, um, you know, our first approach is to say that it's preempted by state law and the legislature knew what they were doing by removing that acreage. And, and again, we're relying on the fact that the court found that we did meet the amount of land standard and the best achieved standard the first time around. Um, and the changes don't affect that calculation. And so, again, you know, categorize it as only arguments lawyers could love, but that's, you know, our approach in responding to the remand.
Okay. So, so the, you, you're in agreement concurrence that we need to look at the best achieves from a qualitative standpoint?
It is. I, it, it is a qualitative standard. And again, you know, what, what we have in the findings and what's been adopted through all the various iterations of the findings, I think, you know, were, were affirmed by the court. And again, you know, when you talk about the core four, we're, you know, Clackamas County is considering findings that address those standards. Multnomah County will be addressing findings that include those standards and Metro has already done so. Uh, Washington County's out of it, of course, but, uh, but I think you do have that concurrence, at least, that, that the, the consideration is before the elected officials to determine whether that's, you know, whether it's hitting the mark, if you will.
So, yeah, the motion that we are considering is, uh, we have three. If, if you're interested in getting the IGA in, in, uh, referenced in the package, you need to select, uh, the second motion.
Are you prepared to accept a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair, can I, can I ask you to clarify my question?
Uh...
Are we beyond that point?
We're beyond that point. Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the findings as recommended by staff, but with the following changes. Add a reference in the findings to the IGA as evidence that the Stafford area can be served by urban level public facilities as required by state law and administrative rule.
There a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to move to approve the findings as recommended by staff with the following changes. Add a reference in the findings to the IGA as evidence that Stafford area can be served by urban levels of service, facility, uh, urban levels of public facilities and require, as required by state law and administrative rules. Any further discussion?
I guess, uh, I need to know when I qualify my vote. Do I do that now or vote first and then qualify?
Uh, well, I'm gonna poll, I'm gonna have, uh, the commission polled. Well, I would say now.
Okay. So I am prepared to vote yes on this, uh, reluctantly because I think it has been a long time. Uh, there is an IGA outstanding that has not been signed yet by the cities, but there are three areas right now I would like to verbally get in the record. So it's not only recorded, um, on a piece of paper, that there is a verbal reporting, number three, when you look at some of this citizen involvement. The parties agree that future decision-making regarding the timing and content of concept planning and the expansion of the UGB must involve the participants of citizens from the Stafford community, and I would like to say the Stafford hamlet specifically, as well as other stakeholders and will take into account public testimony when developing the concept plans. I think that this whole notion of citizen participation is a key element of what we do here in this county. And I think the citizens who have lived there for many years need to be, uh, very deeply involved in anything that happens to their community. Then the grant funding for transportation planning. Metro and the county will undertake a transportation planning project using the one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, Community Planning and Development Grant from Metro to the county to study and plan for transportation and other public infrastructure in the Stafford area. Work on the planning project will begin once Metro and the county have finalized a decision on urban reserves. Let me send this message to Metro. One hundred and seventy thousand dollars is jump change. We all know that. So if Metro is actually going to use a tool like the RTP in a reasonable manner that actually reflects what has to done, then I would fully expect, without even much pushing on our part, that the leadership of Metro review the RTP and get the right kinds of things on it if this area is going to urbanize. And I think that has to be a very loud and clear message. If this is a priority, then it needs to reflect that priority, not for twenty thirty-five, but sooner than later. And then support for widening I two oh five. The parties agree to continue to support joint, J-PAC's Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation's decision to make widening I two oh five from Oregon City to Stafford a top priority of regional transportation projects in order to help address the transportation infrastructure issues related to future urbanization of Stafford as well as other regional transportation needs. These are three of the elements. I personally would like to see citizen involvement. Um, you know, I don't know, it hasn't been signed yet by the cities. I would expect if some of the cities want to see that beefed up, that might be something. I think Wes Lynn would actually, is part of my, my expectation. And also, the widening for two, I two oh five is going to have to have, and I think that we've gotten widespread support for that. I'm not so worried about that as much as I am worried about the adequate dollars that the region will need to come up with, uh, for, for the infrastructure in this, in the Stafford area, should they want to urbanize it up to a certain level. So with that, that, those are my qualifications. I do want to thank Commissioner Bernard and Commissioner Humberton, who worked very, very diligently on this. Evidently, they had a meetings with the mayors the other day. I am told, I have been told by my colleagues, that it is imminent that a signing will happen. I just want to get this in the record.
Sonia?
Yeah, and I just want to support, um, everything that Commissioner Schrader said, that my support of this really is contingent on this IGA and the constructive process that I know has occurred with the cities and the members of the community to make sure that citizen involvement, especially with the community of Stafford, is involved in any future development.
Commissioner Savis?
I just want to, just, um, I want to state that I, I too think that the, um, you know, my vote on where, if it does turn out to be May eleventh, as far as that will be, um, a factor, will be the, um, agreement, the five-party agreement between the cities, the county and metro. So, uh, but today, you know, and I'm still struggling with this, whether I'm gonna vote to move it forward, or, you know, I think it's ready and I think, and I just, and Martha said a lot of things which I agree with, Commissioner Schrader, um, said a lot of things. And one of the things she really mentioned was the RTP. And I, I would say that if, if the policies and the structure was in place and, and really the, the belief that we really need to move people from, uh, areas where people are housed, because Clackamas County is a highly residential county, uh, we have a lot of homes and not a lot of jobs, that were to be moving people across there, that if there was a commitment to, um, have a transportation system and RTP that reflected moving those people from here to Washington County and back every day, where the, where the land is sited in these reserves, um, and there was a belief and a follow-through and the smart people, all these smart people got together, us electeds, all of us, and said, okay, we've, we're gonna prove these reserves. And the plan is, these are where most of the jobs are gonna go. Then a plan that would complement that would be a transportation plan, the regional transportation plan that said, yes, and we are gonna do this and have this particular highway to get there or, and transportation, or whatever it may be, to get there. Then I would say, you gotta, you gotta plan. You, you got a, a big picture plan to get there. Well, that transportation element is missing in the big scale of things. So, I don't think we're quite there and maybe I can talk to folks at Metro, and I'm actually gonna do that. I'm gonna try to say, okay, because I'm the transportation liaison, we're struggling all the time at J-PAC because we want to build a lot of sidewalks and we want to build a lot of bike lanes and those are very, very important. But there's not a lot of emphasis on building the big infrastructure to solve the big problems. And that's, I think, that's the responsibility of the regional government. And this is a regional plan, as is the transportation plan, and we're not talking that big picture. That's the part that I struggle with. So, um, come May eleventh, between now and May eleventh, that's what I'm gonna do is say, okay, one last stab at it, show me a commitment or show me a means of how we're gonna deal with that. And do, do we all realize what we're all doing? That coordination, the core four coming together today and saying, which hasn't happened, saying, okay, this is how we're gonna solve this problem. Then I would say, um, I could, I could probably support that. But focusing on what the law requires versus on what, you know, in this sense, versus what we practically and qualitatively get to and need, um, that's the, that's the part that's, that's, there's a vacuum there. That's what's missing.
I think you talked about the chicken and the egg. Uh, you know, uh, you can't plan a transportation system until a concept is actually developed. The other thing is, is that this IGA, we just said we're letting the cities make that determination. Now you're saying, let's have Metro make that determination.
No, no, no. No, 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 I'm not, I'm not mixing, I'm not talking about the two oh five element. I'm not talking about the Stafford. I'm talking about the, the big picture. The regional transportation plan is, is a fifty-year plan. Uh, this is a fifty-year plan. They should coincide with one another.
That, that infrastructure can't be constructed.
And I'm not saying it has to be constructed, but it should be, it should be, it should be verbalized, it should be embedded in there as the means, because we're saying, here's the land and, and that's where it's gonna go. And I'm not saying you build the infrastructure tomorrow or by May eleventh. I'm saying that you have it in the plan to do that. And, and that's the part, if that's somewhere and I don't see it, then I'm gonna look to find it and ask Commissioner Mitchell's help to find where that is, that we address that in the plan, not in the build.
Right. And my point is, my point is this, that yes, it's the city's responsibility, but we all know this, the RTP is a regional process and it will be the county's responsibility as well, whatever city that decides to annex that area, to make sure that the money infrastructure regionally is there. So we will continue to have a role in this, not as directly perhaps, but we do participate in RTP processes that help, uh, that's why we have C four, that actually helps, uh, folks to get their projects, what they need up on that, on that list. And I'm just trying to make the point that needs to happen sooner than later, uh, if Metro is going to stay true to what they want to do for complete and livable communities. And I'm gonna stop talking after this, but I do want to say, May twenty-seventh, twenty-ten, it was a five-zero vote with Commissioner Peterson, Bernard, Lee, Han, Linegar and Austin to move forward. No, excuse me. Represent, uh, Commissioner Austin was essentially, uh, excused for that. Okay. So it was a four-zero.
So I, I just want to add one, one comment. So, the RTP generally adopts what the communities choose as their system, their transportation system plan. You're asking for it to be the other way around, which is that you want the, uh, Metro to adopt a regional transportation plan, uh, committing to paying for something that hasn't been planned for or exists.
That's not what I'm saying.
Well...
No, that's not, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay, what are you saying?
I'm saying, and, and you're, you're partially right. What you're right is that the RTP is basically a combination of all of the individual jurisdictions' transportation plans in a small sense, right? What I'm saying is that there should be a regional transportation plan that addresses and, not funds, not fines the capital, because that's in the future, but that should coincide with what we're putting the land. And that big picture thinking is not yet there and it's not in the plan. It should be part of the plan and frankly, the discussions even as far as last Thursday and, and years past has been, whose responsibility is it to talk about the big, the si, the big system? That's not the city's. It's not. I mean, it's all of us together collectively, but we have to think about the big, the big structure, uh, the interstate system or the transit line systems, whatever they are. We need to talk about that regional system and that's the part that's not in the RTP. And I'll go back and find it, maybe it's there, but we, that's the dialogue that needs to happen. That's the comfort, I think, that all of us have to see. If you've, if you're gonna put the land here and you're gonna move people back and forth, then show me the transportation plan that gets there. That's the part I'm talking about. I'm not talking about Stafford particularly, I'm not talking about I two oh five, I'm talking about the whole si, system that will meet this.
Should we call the question?
Yep. Let's call the question.
Please, sir, uh, take the roll, I guess.
Commissioner Humberton?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
To move it forward in May eleventh? Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously and, let me see, there's something I'm supposed to read. Now that the findings have been approved as amended, I will, uh, direct staff to draft an ordinance reflecting today's decision and include on the agenda for the board's adoption on May eleventh, business meeting. If, if there's no further business?
Chair?
Uh, we'll adjourn.
Just, just want, just...
Wait, just wanna, wait.
I just want to say that, that, you know, the, the, the things that we were contingent upon, as you cited in that, in that script there, that I don't agree with the last part of that script.
Okay, it was in front of you. Don?
Yeah, so I was just going to say, it is, it is our intention as well than, uh, given the sense of the board, to make sure that we schedule consideration of the intergovernmental agreement on May the eleventh as well, at the very same day, same time.
Because I heard there were contingencies upon that.
Contingency is they all have to agree.
It's very, I need to get it done.
Yep. Thank you.